And Katie Ackland, the Zoom link.
Okay, um, welcome everyone to our session today, which is morphed into kind of meetings. So, everyone is, uh, thank you for joining us. We, Mandy, is there anyone from the public zooming in?
There's not.
Okay. I'm going to dispense with our public comment until, unless and until someone joins us, and then I will do it at that time. So, our first item, then we're going to go to 4.01, which is approve, oh, and I should mention, Mr. Banfield is not present. So, everyone else.
And the shepherds have got, I wanted to introduce Dan Neff.
Oh, yeah.
We're the Director of Secondary Education.
Hi, Dan.
For the board.
And.
And then, of course, we have Dr. Puccia, our new Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Welcome.
Nice to see you all.
Yeah.
We'll try and be as smooth and, you know.
I mean.
Do a good job.
The bill, just try to get the TV to be this, be the actual screen also. Normally, like, all three would show the agenda right now.
Okay, um, I'm just here to tell you that they're, that they'll be along in just a minute.
You're fine. Sorry. About my break, right?
I don't shoot them, that's me.
So, welcome, gentlemen. No, welcome.
Thank you.
So, our first item is 4.01, approving Prop 28 annual funding report. With, yeah, whoever.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. Um, we are required by law to submit an annual report regarding our Prop 28 expenditures. How many staff were involved, hired, the number.
My end your audio on.
No.
I'm not part of this Zoom.
Well, I just.
Oh. It's okay. There you go.
It's okay.
Okay. Here we go.
Okay, um, how many staff members were hired, how many students were served, et cetera? As you are aware, we were working robustly communicating with educational partners, seeking feedback from schools regarding how to implement the programming. And so, the, as the report shows, we did not expend any funds for 2324 on Prop 28 last school year. We do anticipate at this time next school year, we will have expended funds and we will complete all the reporting requirements. So, we seek your approval that we have accurately reported our spending this year.
Right, so this is an action item, but first let's see if there's any discussion in the board, any questions or comments? Okay, then, um, we'll take a vote.
You're seeking a motion?
Yes, I'm seeking a motion before I take a vote, that is the appropriate call.
Okay, I'll move approval of item 4.01 to approve the Prop 28 annual funding report for 2324.
Ready? We have a motion by Elizabeth Rogers, second by Mr. Under. Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Plussen.
Yes.
Mr. Under.
Yes.
Mr. Buckman.
Yes.
Mr. Tintin. Yes, and I'm a yes, so, um, we have six yeses and one no. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, it'd be, we'll look forward to seeing what we actually do with this one.
I think before the beginning of the year, we actually had to bring to, back to kind of a report on how we're going to spend Prop 28 out, I believe. Our new requirement in terms of what we're doing for the 2425 school, so it's going to come back some more.
Next is 4.02, Measure C22, least least by publicly, and then at one, Delmar.
Yeah, so this is, um, Phase One, Delmar Elementary School, and so I, I pulled up a couple of, uh, of documents really quick, just to share with the board. And so, you know, just in general, uh, kind of a campus map, which I'll, I'll show you really quick in terms of the work that's going to be done. So, I'll pop up really quick and you, what, what you can see is, again, this is Phase One. There's a little bit of, uh, a little bit of utility work that we end up wanting to do now with Phase One, because it was necessary in terms of fire alarm, electricity and things, in order to put in the new two modular kindergarten classrooms. So, that was a, a little bit of extra work added to Phase One for Phase Two. But in general, what we're doing is we are modernizing the current kindergarten room. Mainly exterior roofing, new HVAC, air conditioning, heating, right? It's kind of a light modernization, because that building is, you know, it's a decent shape, but, you know, carpet, paint. I believe we have to expand the bathroom, make both of the bathrooms ADA accessible, so a few things like that, um, as part of this bid. We're also doing all of the, um, multi-stall restrooms on this campus, which includes the bathroom that's right here at the 300 wing. It also includes, um, these two restrooms that are on the side classroom wings. They'll phase those as they go through it. Uh, and then, there's also some ADA work that has to be done in these two offices that are here. Everything that isn't a yellow, it almost looks green when you look down on the computer, but that is all of the ADA accessible pathway, concrete work that has to be done. Okay, so, this is the inspector going out and shaking the slopes and the, you know, the accessible paths, those types of things. So, all of this concrete work as well is part of this, um, original bid. This is DSA approved project, it's gone through, again, because of its DSA approved, now we're able to actually get the modulars going, the bioplex moving forward. But I just wanted you to see the scope of this Phase One work. Okay? The, um, our, uh, our Phase One budget for this work was 4.96 million. That was our, that was our, what we budgeted, you know, our first budget, so it pretty much came right in on what we anticipated in terms of budget for this project. And, and so, again, this is the first of several GMPs that we're going to be bidding. Uh, I, I look forward to the next board meeting, uh, study session on, on August 8th, where I'm going to give you kind of a recap of every single site where we're at, DSA approvals. I think we just had CL Smith get approved, Monarch Grove got approved, um, we're expecting Bishop Peak to be approved. We're going to have, uh, Pat Beach approved very soon, so these, they're all hitting now. So, I think it's a good time for us to, again, walk the board through each project, each phase, those types of things. But I wanted to start with showing you the map for Delmar Elementary. Mr. Buckman? Yeah, thank you, guys.
Dylan, sorry, thanks. So, I heard the word modular, so I'm going to ask this. Modular that we saw in the CMR seemed to be directly on the ground, some needed sandbags. So, I'm wondering, did ours, ours elevated as a step, two steps, or are they directly on the ground?
It's on a slope, a little bit, so there'll be kind of a ramp in front, so one end is kind of almost flush, but not because that, where that area is, it actually slopes way from building.
For Delmar.
But we, but knowing that, because we've had that problem on previous projects, we have changed the thresholds. So, it does more of a step up.
Yep.
To stop any, if there is some, some water that comes up, so we, we definitely have addressed that issue.
And I'm going to probably repeat this question every time I hear the word modular. Thank you.
So, in the modular, is that wood touching ground, or is it a manufactured?
It's wood, wood sitting on top of a concrete foundation around the edge.
Found that had to build, rebuild two decks on my house because of termite. And the worst damage was done because the wood was sitting right on the soil, so I'm sure you mitigate it.
Yes, those would be the up off the ground, these 16 to 18 inches of that concrete, depending on the area on the slope.
And stucco, stucco exterior as well, right?
Yeah, they're not on, directly on the ground.
So, this is a approximately 10-month project, you'll see we have 13 payments that we've laid out. We've, we've been going back and forth just to try to make it as clear to the board as possible. As part of the contract, we pull out the, any allowances, there were no allowances of this project. Mr. Weisong has bid everything, and then, uh, we do pull up contingency from the payments. Should they use contingency, should we have a change order? Then that basically, let's say they have five more payments left, and there's a, a $10,000 contingency, then basically $2,000 would be added to each of the five payments. That's how contingencies, that's how allowance are tied into these payments moving forward. So, we're excited to get, get moving on this project and, um, kind of getting measures picked up at these schools.
Great, any other questions?
Yes, just in terms of the higher handling contingencies, does it vary a little bit, project to project, and now we're going to do it all the same way, or did I just misinterpret?
No, I mean, where, so again, smaller projects, we, you have smaller.
I didn't know. Sorry, sorry.
So, you kind of know, you know, there's, again, contingency for us is more, what, what are the potential unknowns that we might see in a project type of thing? So, in this case, you know, normally it's going to be about a 7% contingency, it's kind of our normal, what it would be. It could be five if it's, you know, one of our smaller demo projects, right? Because there's not like, you know, there's not going to be a lot to it. We're probably going to do like a 10% contingency on the Monarch Grove project, because it's basically going to be 24 months. So, a little concerned about, you know, in terms of longevity and the potential change, so that's something we talk about, we discuss, what do we think, right? But, you know, you'll never see anything over 10. It's really project-based.
10's a fact, we do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to do a little backtracking here. I know that we've had a couple people from the public join us at this time, so welcome. And, uh, if anyone, we're going to backtrack a little bit and see if anyone has public comment at this time for anything under the purview of the school board. And if so, we will welcome that and ask for, we're going to come back to the item we're on. I know it's an action item, but I don't know where people stand on, if anyone had a public comment on, uh, something not on the agenda. You'll have three minutes, we'll have a timekeeper, and so at this time, I'll ask if anyone joining us on Zoom, uh, has been, has public comment.
Reporting in progress.
I'm not seeing.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so, sorry to skip around a little bit, just want to make sure we cover everything. So, we are back to 4.02.
So, we're asking the board today to approve the, uh, the Phase One GMP for Delmar Elementary School.
Any further questions or comments, any, uh, questions or comments from the public? Being none. Hey, Jim. Motion by Mr. Buckman, second by?
Please comment.
By me, I'll be the second.
That's a lot of question.
Oh, uh, and Mr. Under has a question.
So, during the, during the, the construction of the TK, of the kindergarten rooms, we, do we expect that to be finished this summer? Well, because, because what I'm wondering is, how are we going to accommodate the current kindergarten, which is in the place where TK is going with the kindergarten that we're constructing?
So, it's fixed.
It's fixed.
So, so once we have the, uh, modulars installed.
And we expect that this summer?
It's going in production, I sent them an email yesterday.
By October.
So, they can't put in production until we have DSA plans.
Okay.
So, this list in, end of September, begin of October, they should be done. But that gives us enough time, enough time to do the foundations and get it ready. So, once they install those, get them, get them installed and done, then we'll move them out of the current kindergarten classrooms into those, and so it's kind of.
More of a mid-year move. It'll be more of a mid-year.
Where's TK going?
They, they have tons of space, they currently have.
So, we're putting in a current.
They currently have their current TK portable that they're using.
Okay, so we'll put it over there, which was also.
So, it'll just stay, the TK will stay in that class like it is right now. It'll be the two kindergarten classes that will move. Then we'll do the kindergarten room, modernize that after the TK, after the kindergarten rooms are in, and then TK will move into that, into that facility.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's a great question.
Anything else? All right, we have a motion by Mr. Buck, uh, by Mark, this is a study question. We have a motion by Mark, a second by me, um, Mark.
Yeah.
E, yes, Chris.
Yes.
Marilyn.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Okay, we've got, just the one, excellent. Okay, next is 4.03, another, uh, for Hawthorne, another Measure C22.
So, uh, I, I thought it would be good to lay out a little bit, hang on, zoom bars. Okay, so, Google Earth. Probably best for me to kind of Google Earth a map of this for you. And so, we'll have Mr. Bond can run my computer, so this is, this is, uh, basically just demolition of two spots at Hawthorne Elementary School to get in, to get kind of prepared for Phase One work that's going to happen there. These are two major concrete areas that are going to get torn up and redone, ADA pathways, those types of things. We thought it would be best if we could get this done before it started. This is the noise issues that are going to be associated with this, right? So, the first one, um, is actually, we are going to be redoing the entire front, um, area of Hawthorne. So, making a new ADA accessible pathway ramp there. If you, this is the one school that, as we put fences around and try to keep, you know, kind of have that maintain the one entrance. This is the one where the pathway currently leads you to a gate. So, a disabled person is unable to get through unless somebody goes and opens the gate and lets them in. So, this will take care of all of that, right? It will, and redo that area. We're going to be moving the bike racks to the back of the campus, where the new kind of childcare rooms are, so kind of rearranging the campus a little bit as we do it. But this whole area through here is going to get completely redone. So, that is the first area that will be demoed, and then they'll be ready to start work once we get, get the, um, get the, the entire, the rest of the project through DSA approved. Then we can move forward and kind of put that in place, but again, the noise factor will be nice. So, they will have kind of a separate entrance. While school's going, we'll be kind of on the side there through the back, right? And then we also have this gated entrance, where you walk up to the office, so they'll be using some temporary entrances until that's completed. Okay? As you go down, the second part of this GMP for the demo plan is basically this area right in here. So, currently, there's only one walkway that you go down to get to the multipurpose room, right? There's an elevator here, of course, for disabled access, but for, for the site, it really gets congested. You got kids coming to lunch, you got kids leaving the playground, right? So, so we were going to make a new walkway, a second walkway that comes down, feeds down, has ADA path that comes to that multipurpose room here as well. So, something the site really wanted, um, to tie in. So, we'll be doing this demo as well, the concrete around that area, still be able to use the multipurpose room kitchen, kids can get in and out. But again, a lot of, a lot of noise, damage, you know, types of things to get that done before they come back to school, right? They'll just be ready to go, um, you know, fit stuff, ready for them to start to build once, once approved. Right now, it's really, it's, it's weird, right? So, right now, if you walk there, there's a gate here, and then there's this like little path that leads to nowhere. There's just nothing, it's just like, it's a concrete path, but there's nothing after it, right? So, this will now give, provide that second access point to come down to the, to the area. So, it's a, it'll be a nice thing for the site, you know, in terms of launch.
So, at one pathway is congested now?
Yeah.
During construction, is, I'll be planning for the, I'm going to guess there's more, it's going to increase.
So, this will be the same, right? So, this will be the same walkway, that'll still remain open. Not changing that, that's what they currently have, it's what they've lived with for the past, what, 30 years, right? It'll be, this area will be cut off from them, right? Because this will be a new walkway that comes down, kind of a, you know, we have to do a ramp, a double ramp to, to make it maybe accessible to come down, so it'll be actual.
Then, we're going to allow on the others, on the things to travel on the other side. So, my question would be, we're going to be, I'm going to guess that's going to be a whole lot more congested for the community, so garbage pickup, fire department.
So, that's on the back end.
Right.
Back here, we're not doing that.
You're not going to use that for any.
No, this is all the same. They come in here. The other entrance points on this side. There's gates on this side, over by the blacktop all the time. Not, not here. This will all stay the same.
And I appreciate that, but we're going to have more, more, more people using that side of the building.
Most likely.
So, my fear is, is that, I guess my biggest thing is, maybe a top of the city, in the garbage department, because that street's going to get narrower, more congested. And somebody, I just think somebody needs to know, so I don't know if that was planned or not. Just open it up.
And we've been working with them on the trees in the front and other areas, so.
A question I have on that front section, which that is a strange campus to get into.
It is.
It's going to be great to have that fixed.
Yeah.
But because that front now, that whole neighborhood section, are they going to be aware of the jackhammering and, you know, that it's going to be noisy for a little while? That you, I know that you.
We have.
Work hard.
Yeah.
With the neighborhood, but, okay, does that stop this?
It would be loud.
So, the back end.
It's relatively quick, demo happens pretty, pretty quick.
Yeah, they said three to four days.
Oh, okay.
So, it's not weeks.
I was just remembering, I was remembering CL Smith, you know, like went out.
It was a little different, yeah.
It was just.
Because that was modernization within a building.
Yeah.
You know, keeping the walls, uh, calm, you know, floors, those types of things.
That's a, that's a big difference. It just, yeah, and it's not.
It's still super loud, right? So, the fact that we get this done in four starts will be very, will be helpful.
Okay.
They'll also let the school set the traffic pattern and everything for parents, you know, once they come in, once the school gets started, those types of things, right? It'll be established, which will be nice versus third week of school, all of a sudden now we're carrying everything up, and now we're creating new pathways and, so, you know, Brittany. Again, we're, we're putting together new maps for every site with this construction, with information, so that sites have it, to send that to parents, to notify them, to let them know, hey, here are the entrances, exits. Redoing all of the emergency plans and maps and where kids walk and teachers walk, those types of things as well, so a lot of those things.
I'm asking if you probably have the answers to already, but that is a school night, seems to be super good time. And so, you guys are scheduled, and you're over at your contractor, prostitution. No, seriously, I mean, I just think.
No, yeah.
It's a great time to go. Thanks.
So, yes, this, um.
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Um, I'm wondering, it's, school starts in less than a month.
Yeah.
So, have you submitted this as a phased, you know, to DSA, and this is Phase One, and do we have approvals for this?
So, demo work does not need to be DSA approved.
Okay.
That's why we're only doing the demo.
So, what approvals do we need for?
So, for the construction, we need, start construction, we need approvals. And we need approvals to bring you, um, for the GMP for that piece. So, for us, the demo, the reason we do the demo early, at least we can get it going, and hopefully do it during the summer. This is approved during, you know, these last couple weeks, to avoid all that noise during school.
But you don't need DSA approved plans to do the demo.
And do you need, uh, city approval?
No.
Remettory.
Not on our property. We did have to do it for the tree removal. So, there is a tree in the front that's on the city property, along the side, two trees along the city property. So, that's something we had to go through the city, had to get permitted, had to work with them, had to go through a process. They actually denied us at first.
Yeah.
For the two. And then Chris had to go to a meeting and talk with the, the tree committee and we brought in our.
We appealed the tree committee and we took our arborist, another serving by an arborist with us, and had to give our presentation, and they overturned it. But they did add stipulations to it, right? So, we have to add five more trees, a lot of those too.
Which we were adding anyways.
Which we were doing, so it was easy, easy to meet, so it turned out, it turned out well, so.
So, this has, this demo has not yet begun, but you.
No, 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 it has to be approved by you first, right? Well, if approved today, then basically here, it takes about a week for them to get started, and then they can get it done. But they bid the project, they have the bids, they're ready to go, like, they're just waiting now for the board approval.
Okay, okay.
But one of the reasons we're, we're doing it that way is because we know it's coming out DSA, like, anytime. So, that just helps speed, speed things up. And with the noise.
And the noise, mainly the noise.
No, I, I appreciate. So, if there, is there more comment? Well, I need to go to the public, and it looks like Mark at the.
Oh, thanks, just, so I just, I, just to talk, so the, the reason for the extra trees, is that that new shade law, and do the trees count for the asphalt not being honored to?
Not from the city, the city was, but, but for, for us, for parking lots and asphalt coverage, yeah, there is a, a minimum, we need to 40% or something.
New DSA approval, so you'll see that at Pat Beach with the new school. A lot of that's tied to new construction versus modernization.
Yeah.
But this was a campus that, again, you know, we talked with the principal, we talked with teachers, we talked with the site, they need some shade. So, they had asked, you know, Brittany, Tricano had to ask for us to put some trees in, so they, all right, we were going to do it, we're going to add a, along the blacktop there, and so, so, yeah. It's a win-win. And we're able to put trees in, and now we can actually redo the sidewalk, make it ADA, ADA accessible, we can put in trees that aren't going to be gigantic in 20 years, right? That actually fit the 24, you know, intersections and those types of things, so it's, it will end up being nice and, it's really going to, I think I've, I've shown you the new Hawthorne sign and the walkway in, in previous meetings, but it will really give that front of that campus a lot of pop, right? So, it's, it'll look really nice when that's in, and, you know, some wayfinding for that school will, will be a good thing.
Anyone from the public have a comment on this item? Okay, great, then I would, were you going to make a motion before?
I, I can, I will. Uh, I'll move approval of item 4.03. I'll just move that, 4.03.
A second back motion.
I, I'm sorry, who seconded? Oh, Mr. Plussen.
Shot two.
Way to go. Okay, we have a motion by Marilyn, a second by Brian, Marilyn.
Yes, Brian.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
E, yes. Chris.
Yeah.
I'm a yes. Okay, so, thank you. Next is 4.04, policy revision.
So, if I could set this one up, and then I'll hand it off to Lisa and Josh. So, again, this next one is board policy revision, reflecting new Title IX regulations, right? So, um, you know, this is, it's a weird, this was just a weird one, like, it's something not norm for us. I think in my 14 years here with split district, we've never had anything like this, um, happen before in terms of board policies. I, we, it's a little bit of transition part too, because I know Dan Block, who was HR at the time, right? Like, this came out in April, May, and, and these new changes are coming, and so you're trying to just figure things out, hey, what's going on? Of course, CSBA hasn't, they still don't have the new policies yet, right? That hasn't even come to the normal board subcommittee, right, for policies, those types of things. So, um, all of that said, Lozano Smith had been like, hey, guys, this is coming for you, right? Get May, June, um, again, it just, I think between Dan and then Lisa policy, like, what? We have to do all of this, right? Just so the board knows, right? So, again, this is definitely a law. So, all of that said, I'm going to hand it over to Lisa, Josh, and I'll kind of give you the emphasis of what the change is, what Lozano Smith, our attorneys are telling us we should do, right? Because by federal law, we have to have these implemented by the end of July. And then, of course, once CSBA comes out with their, if they're different than what Lozano Smith has brought, then, of course, we'll go to the board subcommittee, and the board subcommittee can make recommendations, the, the board can change policy.
So, we can go back and do our usual, regular.
Your normal process, right? So, that said.
To that end, we're here to try and align our policies to the new law and federal guidelines, and we are asking and seeking your approval and action today. And we'll go ahead and revise the policies as the gamut I had read. Thank you, Mr. Mark, for sharing with me, and then the entire board. CSBA also had a great article that said, "CSBA expects to be coming out with an entire packet in late July." So, it could be as quickly as a few weeks from now. But we are going to be looking for your approval on these board policies today. So, on, what happened was on April 19th, the United States Department of Education released the new regulations under Title IX 2024. And Title, Title IX, for those of the public, is a federal law that prohibits discrimination on the basis of sex in federally funded educational settings such as school districts and community colleges. It, it both is changing kind of the, some content of the Title IX protections, who's protected and how. And it also is increasing some requirements of training that are going to have to occur within our school district. But, um, we, we are not talking about. But, um, we, we are not talking about the training pieces necessarily today, but that's also part of the updates of these new regulations. We have included attached, um, to the agenda item, the policies. It's there, one, two, three, four, five board policies for review and discussion today. There are accompanying ARs, if you remember, the administrative regulations don't go through our board policy subcommittee. And they are shared with you on board agendas and information only. And because this is a study session, not a board meeting, they're not on here for information only, and the ARs will be in the August. Meeting that we regularly have. So with that, um, I'll turn it over to Josh and let him add what else I might have missed.
Yeah, no, thank you, and, um, for those of the public who don't know, I'm Josh Whiteside, an attorney with Lozano Smith. And, uh, we had a team of experts that were poring through fifteen hundred pages of non-red lines. Uh, really detailed, uh, full of commentary, full of case citation, uh, information on these regulations from the Department of Education. And, um, I think they've done a good admirable job of trying to get something workable out of those regulations. With, um, some straightforward, uh, solutions here to kind of come to terms with what the regulations are asking districts across the nation to adopt. Um, and so these, these changes, um, you know, we, we've worked on them, we've provided them to you, uh, now, but, um. You know, that was a lot to get through in those two months or so. Uh, and so that is why they're coming to you now, rather than, we would have loved to bring them to you, you know, last month, have given you more time to chew on these. Unfortunately, the federal government has given us a lot of information, a lot to consider with very little time to actually implement those changes. And so this is, this August first deadline is one that, um, repeatedly at trainings and at informational forums and sessions that OCR has hosted. Over the past two months, uh, we have repeatedly had and, and, uh, tried to elevate the conversation and say, this is ridiculous, a timeline, this is. Um, putting districts in a really difficult position, especially when, uh, to some extent, uh, this is, these Title IX regulations are the subject of a lot of political discourse. Um, of course, this is stemming from changes that were made through Title IX guidance under President Obama. Which were then, uh, modified by Title IX regulations adopted under President Trump and now. Um, although we've been aware that these regulation changes were going to come, uh. You know, now it's a, it's a hurry up and wait sort of scenario that the Department of Education has taken. Uh, where they've sat on this for, and, you know, processed what, what needed to be changed over three years, received comment. And then now, once they finally give it out to us, um, give us this really short deadline to, to enact. Um, I do want to make comment, um, just to, so the board is aware of. That there is a federal case currently pending in Kansas, um, out of a United States District Court. Um, which has halted implementation of these Title IX regulations for specific schools in that litigation primarily. Um, but then also that judge has allowed for, uh, the parties at laws for other plaintiff organizations to submit. Uh, a, an application to be, to have their school where their children are located, be identified and also be subject to that same injunction. Uh, that's being issued by the judge to prevent, uh, enforcement of these Title IX regulations. St. Louis Coastal Unified, uh, was not part of that list, was not identified as a school for that litigation. So it's not, uh, applicable at this time, um, so we're not, we're not having to, you know, stop movements on this. Um, if there were to be a development in that regard, then certainly we could, you know, come back and, and decide not to implement, uh, and bring that report to the board.
I also wanted to add, I forgot to mention, there is some color coding on these documents and for the purposes of the public as well. So the changes that Lozano Smith had recommended or made on the board policies were originally all in red. And then as they got updated through the Save House process into Board Doc, some of the red stopped in the blues, so there was red and blues on the board policies. Then, one of the board policies we discovered had a clerical numerical error that was fixed. And Valerie Harrigan, my assistant, was very helpful and quick. And turned that board policy into our usual Google Doc style and she turned it all green. As being part of our, cause usually in our process, we color code, so we can keep track of who recommended what. And so you'll find one of the board policies has green on it. Um. To that end, essentially, anything that is colored is all the re- same recommendations that came from Lozano Smith to implement the federal change. So I hope that's clear, um, I understand why it's confusing and it was all the best intentions, but it got a little confused.
And then just one other point is that, um, although the bulk of the changes that were put into those colors. Uh, for you to consider are from the Title IX regulations. Uh, as we were updating these, we noticed that there were two elements that have, um, already been adopted by California law. Um, regarding, uh, dealing with allegations of childhood sexual assault, which is contained in board policy five one four five point seven for sexual harassment. And so the very end of that policy has a list of five, uh, things that the district needs to keep with regard to allegations of child of sexual assault. That's actually not part of Title IX regulations, it's a separate new legal obligation that fits in with that section on record keeping for child abuse. Allegations, and then the second is there was a change to California discrimination law. Dealing with reproductive health decision making and prohibiting discrimination against employees for any sort of reproductive health decision making. That's already in the law, it was missing from this AR, so, or from the board policy, so. We inserted it to bring it up to speed with where we are in California and federal law.
So I will, and, and one clarification I want to make, you had mentioned the ARs and those don't come, ARs aren't. I need to go to the public, is there anyone from the public wishing to address this on item four point oh four? Yeah.
Keep going.
So we'll come back to the board, you.
You might think that you've already covered this, um, Mr. Whiteside, but, um. The training, it says, is to be complete by August first, and that was in your May seventh client newsletter.
Okay.
And that's, that's a physical impossibility since nobody is here. And it now applies to all personnel, so that's a lot of people and not all. And they are on vacation, so. How do you get around something that has been, um, said to be a fixed date that you can't cross?
Yeah, I, I have had multiple heated discussions with OCR attorneys about this and, uh, with potentially increased costs. That this might, uh, mandate on districts and to try to navigate those waters, um, what we have been working on behind the scenes. At Lozano Smith is we're developing essentially a learning platform, a digital learning platform. Much like other employees might experience through, uh, folks like Keenan and other insurance companies. And so we are, um, just putting the final touches on that platform and on a twenty-minute training, uh, video. That will be made available on demand, and so our intention is to send that to employees by that August first date. Um, and then before the start of the school year, uh, before they come and, and, uh, start to block on campus. Um, the expectation is that they will have completed that training.
Okay, sounds doable, good. And then in your May seventh newsletter also, you have five points that are, are the broadened scope. One of them is sex discrimination protection. So as you're mentioning about discrimination and then attitudes and we have sex discrimination law. I looked and studied and searched through these policies, not through the ARs as much, because that comes later, it does not need to be good policy. Um, to find a good standard or definition of what sex discrimination would be. And to that end, because the, the, uh, policy on sexual harassment is talking all about sexual, I'll get, give you the number in a minute, I think it's. Five one four five point seven, it added sex discrimination at the top. And it says sexual, so it's a policy for students on sexual harassment. And then it says, what brings sexual harassment or sex discrimination? And then we proceed to talk about mainly just the harassment. Not the sex discrimination, so it seemed to be, since there's so much of a, um, mandate put on reporting. They want more reporting now, as soon as you see it or think it, in one day's time, you've got to get it to the.
Right.
Title IX coordinator, then in light of that, we should know on what basis the complaint could be filed. What is the definition?
It, it's more complicated than I would like, than I would have been like, because. How it's going to be defined is now based on these regulations, gonna depend on the timing of the incident or the complaint. So, the, yeah, I know, I don't like it either, so.
Because it even refers to before this goes into red eye.
That's exactly right, so there was a new definition that was created for sex discrimination. As part of the Title IX regulations that were adopted under President Trump. Um, and that definition of what is gonna count as a complaint of sex discrimination that falls under Title IX. Is changing with these new regulations starting August first. So from now until July thirty-first, if there's an incident that occurs. And there's later a complaint that is made regarding an incident that occurred prior to August first. Then we'll use one definition of sex discrimination. After August, from August first on, we'll be using the new definition for sex discrimination under these new Title IX regulations. Because of that complication, that's why the, you know, the reference to explaining all of that is in the AR rather than the board policy.
Right. Okay, well, follow up, some of the, a couple of the policies for all personnel and a couple for students, so under, for the students. How are these students, then, are they gonna have this training too? How are they gonna know what sex discrimination is?
Yeah, so the new regulations don't mandate a training for the students by August first. But I, I think that would make a lot of sense to have a sexual harassment, sex discrimination training for students also.
And then again, we get into age appropriateness, do we want our TK, age four year olds to know about sex?
Absolutely. Right, right, I, I, the educators should be working on that or considering that when developing the training.
Okay, so in the training, there will be a more of a definition or a standard as to what it is. And that's something that we can all agree on, uh, as a standard.
Um, it'll be what's in the regulations.
Okay, yeah, so then we'll wait for the regulations about that thing.
Okay.
I might have another one, but I'll give somebody else a chance, like Mr. Rondo, for example.
So I'm thinking about what Eve just talked about, one of the things that we've seen on, on several occasions when we look at disciplinary records of students. And we'll be talking about this later, are allegations of sexual harassment. Um, and, and I guess to Eve's point, um. It, it, it seems to me that we should be, I don't know how we want to talk about it, but that we should be talking to our students about. What is sexual harassment so that they don't engage in those kinds of behaviors? And I don't know if anybody's doing that in California in any way. But it seems like it's gonna become important, it should, it should have been important before, but it seems like it's gonna be more important now.
Yeah, my understanding is that there's a lot of that information, especially in high school, uh, handbooks.
And health, and health classes.
Health classes, Lisa's mentioning, um, we're talking, they're talking about consent, they're talking about those types of, uh, acceptable behaviors. Um, and so I think that could be a natural place where we could insert a whole information.
I, I feel like we've seen the complaints, the upper element, some upper elementary students. Would be, just to see if you remember these things, and also our middle school students.
Yes, we have.
And, and so those are groups that we may want to consider targeting tomorrow.
Principals also do discipline talks twice a year? So this is often times. I treat people, I mean, they go through all the, you know, all kinds of different sexual harassment and harassment of kids and, what you're saying, don't say, I mean. So, and normally they'll go classroom to classroom. Let's say like first period, you know, where in the course of a week, they'll go and they'll go to every school class, break it up for the administrators or counselors and. And have talks with kids, right? Uh, and then also share resources, if something happens or you have a question about it, come see us. So some of this does happen already, maybe not in a formal way, as formal as possible, but which we may want to do now for these new policies. Uh, but, but I just want you to know, we, they do talk with kids about these types of things and have explanation.
So we'll make sure that we may, that, 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 that it's a cohesive, it's a standard message that all. First grade teachers are providing the same information, second grade, they're all the way up through high schools, so that. If, you know, some teacher may be a little uncomfortable with some of this, but that it's going to be important for them to convey. Um, age appropriate information, but that good information be conveyed.
I'll share, uh, I'll work with Dan over the secondary principals, Stephanie, the elementary principals, and Janet, of course, our student services counselor coordinator. And we'll put together an update for you in Friday focus regarding the, what's currently in place. To help our students be prepared for this and what we anticipate to put in place over the course of the year, so I'll provide an update for you.
And do, and do we, oh, right there. Do we still use any outside services for some of the sex that?
I believe, well, I know that we do have some guest speakers, but still, there's a whole guest speaker process thing, is that we do do, I.
Right, so, so will we?
Yes, we can get more information about that.
Cause I know we use CAPSLO for some of this and, you know, just that they are, uh, providing information that is aligned with the regulations that have been fed.
And I will, uh, point out that for board policy five one four five point seven on student sexual harassment. Uh, the second page, page B of that, uh, policy revisions you might have in front of you. Um, has a list of about eight different things that students are, uh, called to be instructed on by this board, um, of district students. And notably in that, uh, we didn't make any, you know, substantive changes to that section. Um, and it already asked for it to be age appropriate information on the subject.
That's right, isn't it age appropriate is something I had brought up with our board subpolicy committee quite a bit. And stood on that as, and, and to, uh, I remember that one of our members, um, in the board said, uh, well, what is age appropriate? And so we need to also know who's gonna decide that.
Yeah.
And is it the Title IX, and we have a new Title IX coordinator that, that needs to be announced, um, and can we say who it is?
Who our coordinator is?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I believe he's sitting at a table over there.
Okay. Well, I didn't want to be the one to say. It's always been.
Yes, it's always been our HR director with our Title IX coordinator and Dr. Fuchia is moving forward, taking that role. As well as all uniform complaints, which is one of the other ones, is, he's also our uniform complaint.
So I, in that regard, so who's gonna help him with this, or is he gonna be like Penny Bornstein as we told it, or what?
So.
Give us no, Penny Bornstein.
She's our health, a public health person that got to take everything we get, put a lot of them.
She was the basic, the first one.
In, in my experience in, in this role in previous district, uh, as, as potential complaints come in, dependent upon after we review the complaint. If it's valid, um, we, we can kind of go through that process. Uh, and then if necessary, I need to go to legal counsel, I share with Dr. Prater, um, and the executive cabinet. And we work through the process, so, um, it, it comes to me first and if I'm able to, um, handle it in a, in a timely fashion within my office, within the capacity.
Hmm.
What I have in front of me, then that's great, but if not, then we move it up the food chain and give it to Shaw's. And now that there's, there's new, uh, law around it and new processes, I'm, I'm sure on the front end, I'll be engaging in that. The second process more frequently until we get really up to speed and understand the process. How to respond and, uh, ultimately, uh, you know, how it all shakes out under the new law.
Mm-hmm, sounds good, all right, thank you. Any other questions for the board? All right, this is an action item, we can, um, to, uh, approve the proposed board policy revisions reflecting the mandatory Title IX regulations. We have, including all, by all. One, one L, so. So there's no further discussion, then. Did go to the public.
I'm not thinking very.
You're, you're timed zone as well.
My time zone.
Um, then if someone could make a motion, that would be appreciated.
And I'll second. And we're doing this just to be, you know, mandates, something, we should stand for. And to, so we're waiving a second reading, which is our usual, so we're. Waiving a second reading and approving the mandatory provisions. To the board policies in order to reflect the title. We're still waiting. So you seconded it, or?
No, I made the move.
Yeah, and then, Rhonda, did you second?
I did second.
Okay, um, Mark.
Sure.
Rhonda.
Yes.
Eve. I abstain. Okay, you you have to vote yes or no, you can't just state that because, uh, there's a conflict of interest. Well, or your assets, so you can vote no, well, the conflict of interest. Might have to do with some of the constituents there.
Well, you, that's not, that's not passed out?
So you can.
Well, how about my own personal?
You can vote yes or no, this is a other day.
No.
Okay. Chris.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Mark, did I say?
Yeah, I'll vote for it.
Okay. Okay, and I am a yes, so. I can. Okay. Thank you very much, and again, just, uh, how we typically vote really. Our next item, Mr. Dallar. Is our, um.
Oh, it's already ready, sorry, it's just, it's just.
It's just gonna hang out.
It's just, did, was this like Matt, did you feel like a psychic wave was like that?
Yeah, yeah, it's like. His timing wasn't perfect.
Okay, so four point oh five, I guess I should be looking at Josh.
Yes.
And I'll go ahead and throw the slides up, Josh, and I can drive for you.
Okay, that's fine, I also have a PowerPoint here if you wanna get the co-host on the starter.
Manny, can you let Josh be a co-host?
And this item is discussion, is not an action item.
Thank you, Manny.
They weren't kidding about those little cookies either, they've got a little.
Oh, yeah, the cookies are.
There's none of the water in this room.
They're really good, but they got a little.
They're still good.
Yeah, let's not, let's. You are properly conducting expulsion.
All right.
Okay.
Court President, should I just go right into it?
Yes, please, you're, you're ready.
Okay, well, thank you very much for having me here, um, to talk about student expulsions. Um, I know that this is something that has kind of raised some questions. Uh, recently, and I, and I think it's good to, you know, even if. Your questions are all answered in your mind right now, I wanna refresher on kind of where we're at. There have been a lot of changes over the last, you know, eight years or so. Um, on student discipline, and I think there's some salient points to kind of consider as we. Think about the future, think about what you wanna do with student expulsion moving forward as a board, as an agency. Um, I know that the, this board is primarily the one that's doing expulsion hearings. A lot of school districts, if not the vast overwhelming majority, rely on an administrative panel. So that does make you unique in in this arena, um, in that you're actually. Processing, hearing all the evidence and, you know, having the two parties show up. At at your meeting to talk about, uh, and either defend or prosecute, um, what's going on here, so. Uh, there's some wrinkles here, uh, to consider with that, um, and I think, uh, important to know is kind of what is your role? Just to start off with, but before we dive into that, I do just want to briefly discuss. What the role of student discipline is today under California law, under what what we're dealing with in a legal perspective. And then we can kind of deal with what your your role as a board would be. So the right to go to a state school is. One of the most crucial and and fundamental aspects of education and and the services that the this district provides for its students. And that is, I might actually in California constitutional, uh, in California constitution, uh, there are no federal rights to education, but there's a state right to education, and that state right includes. Having a safe, secure, peaceful campus for students to go to, uh, and for s- and staff to work at. Um, and so if there's anything that we can do as an agency to ensure that safety, then we're called to action to do that. On, based on this constitutional right, which means that if we violate or perceive to violate that right. Uh, it is a big deal, uh, in the legal world, that's the strongest in form of, uh, legal, uh, language here is from the constitution itself. Uh, and so if there is a perceived violation, uh, perceived, uh, non-compliance, uh, that can. Definitely lead to some significant legal and financial implications and penalties. And this is reinforced through the legislation's efforts over the years repeatedly, you know, asking for school districts to do more. Reduce acts of discrimination, harassment, violence, suspension, bullying. I think there's, uh, you know, there are personal opinions that could be had about, okay, is it just simply the school district's obligation to deal? With those things that seem to run beyond just students in the school community, but it is sizable problem. Um, and the role of poverty, for example, in that, in that analysis, it is something that the legislature rules in terms of that. May not have foretold grasp. Uh, but it is something that, you know, for students at least, we have our clear obligation. Um, that's also, uh, again, emphasized in tort law, so in tort law. Uh, if there's an injury to the student, uh, if they are harmed by another student or, you know, some condition on campus. We have a special relationship towards that student to ensure their safety and take all affirmative steps to protect them from foreseeable harm. It's an elevated form of a relationship and an elevated legal duty. Rather than just sort of, you know, your standard contractual duties that you might have, or. Duties to take care, acting good faith that might exist in other facets of law. This is a special duty to protect, and so this again adds more to this weight of. What are we doing to protect students? How are we acting to protect students on our campuses? When there is violence, when there is bullying, when there is harassment? Are we doing all that we can to satisfy these mandates that are carried out in law? Uh, and to that end, the legislature has prescribed what they deem the most severe instances of student misconduct. Into the education code, and they identified those as the big five offenses, as we like to call it. Um, in in the world of education, um, possessing, selling, or furnishing a firearm. Brandishing a knife at another person, selling drugs, sexual assault or battery, and possession of an explosive. For those five, we have a clear direction from the legislature that. Not only must principals and school site staff must suspend the student for that type of behavior. But they must also recommend that student for expulsion, and with very, very limited exception. The board must also order that expulsion for for those types of offenses. Uh, so for those ones, you know, pretty clear mandate, clear, pretty clear direction that were given. I will note that selling drugs is a lot harder to prove these days. Uh, a lot of students are relying on apps or, uh, or direct messaging through Instagram and through other social media accounts and other. Messaging services for those transactions. It's not like the old days where you would see someone on campus with a dollar bill. And then there'd be this exchange of a baggie and a bill, and we would have evidence from staff observation or student witnesses that would see that. And then you'd come and testify in our hearing, we don't feed that issue for subjects, was there a question?
Yeah, do you want question, you want us to hold questions, or do you want?
I think pepper them as as we generally.
So sometimes during expulsions, there's. For perhaps for one of the, oh, big five, um, there is a recommendation for expulsion and a recommendation to suspend the expulsion. Is that, is that considered a remedy for the, under this particular statute?
Yeah, so, so you have the ability to suspend an expulsion, you have that authorization as a board under the law to do so. The legislature is clear and is directive, it's not necessarily saying you must therefore shall. Under no circumstances consider any alternative, but it's saying, um, you know, if you get this type of expulsion. We strongly suggest and are, um, the default position. Is that you would expel for that, and there's, there's a little bit of language in education code section four eight nine one five. That says that the board can consider, you know, other circumstances to not ultimately. Recommend a full expulsion, so that would give you authorization to suspend the expulsion. But really, it's really pushing for, uh, based on that language, for exclusionary discipline for that subject. So, Ms. Parker.
Thank you, um. So this is giving like extra rights in terms of. Inspecting a phone without a warrant, or, okay, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I see what you're.
Or or they're using our internet, or they're literally using our.
You know, if it's not detailed in law, so if it's not specifically. On board out of our, of our authorization, I think this does give us a pretty broad mandate to take action to ensure the safety. Of our campuses and the safety of our staff and students, it's just that. With the way that California education code has been developed, um, and has been modified over the years. Um, we're one of the most heavily regulated industries in the entire world. Um, and so nearly almost every facet has been kind of addressed to some extent. Um, for example, uh, there, there, there was a law about six years or so ago. That talked about, uh, access for government officials to access students' cell phones or cell phones generally. And we have pretty severe restrictions on the ability now to search those devices and confiscate those devices. And even more so, they added, uh, I think it was three years ago, a new law giving rights to students to have a smartphone on campus. Um, and so we're limited essentially by those competing laws that are more prescriptive and more specific to what we can and can't do. Uh, where we can't, we can't just snap our fingers and search every cell phone that's on campus.
So my, so just to labor this one thing. So my understanding that we can search a car.
Yeah, so if it's on our campus, if it's on our campus, uh, students are not, um, they don't have the right to park on our campus. They don't have the right to park in our parking lot, if there were to be a law that would prescribe that. Then we would have to adjust, we would have to alter.
But we do at this moment directly search a car.
Correct, so there's no, no prescriptive law saying. That student has a right to a car on campus.
Can explain this to you.
Right, okay, thank you, yeah.
Oh, what if it's parked on the street?
Uh, right, so, so, a- again, uh. We don't have au- we don't have authorization for off-campus items, that would be part of their law enforcement's jurisdiction. Um, and so we're, we're kind of limited, again, like I said, we're kind of limited by what laws are playing, but also. We can only control really what's going on on our campus and responding to that. Um, as well as the effects of what's coming on to our campus. So to that extent, for things that are happening offline or online or off-campus. We may need to tap into law enforcement or whatever company, like, for example, for social media. We might have to tap into that social media company to figure out how we can maybe get more information.
Does that mean the S R O being law enforcement company?
Correct. Hmm, that's, that falls under their jurisdiction and their own procedures and how, how they want to act under. City ordinance and the laws that apply to them as peace officers. So with regard to, and I bring up the, these, you know, these big five offenses and the strong emphasis on. And and power that's there in the law on ensuring safety, because I think that is the best. Reason for a board to make a decision to expel these days. Because there's been this shift in movement over the last decade or plus. Uh, to think about how the impact of exclusionary discipline. Uh, has on a particular student and whether that might lead them to a path where they're gonna get embroiled in the criminal justice system. Um, is this going to disillusion them with education? There's a lot of theories, there's a lot of studies, I'm not here to imply personally on, on any of them. But what has resulted from a lot of those studies that have taken place over the, the past decade plus. Um, is that the law has changed, the legislature has reacted to those, to to that information. And has decided, you know what, we don't like. Using, our educators using exclusionary discipline to solve problems on campus with regard to. Safety unless it gets to those big five offenses, or there's some. Immediate danger or continuing danger that is created by that student's presence on campus, and rather. The legislature is pushing for things like restorative justice practices, trauma-informed approaches to responding to student misbehavior. Uh, social emotional learning, positive behavior interventions and supports, right, so. It's thinking about what's going on in the mind of a child, and if you saw it inside out or inside out too, right? Sometimes it can feel like there's like five different people speaking at once. Uh, in in our students' minds, you know, telling them about different emotions to feel, they might, you know, react. Uh, accordingly to those emotions, and so how do we. Create developmentally appropriate, age-appropriate responses to that behavior? To support the student to make a different decision next time, or to learn from their mistakes. Ms. Robert.
How, how is this, how, we've, I know we've been seeing a little of this. But how do you, how do you think that this is gonna be changing our, not only our relationship to expulsion, but our relationship to suspensions? Because usually what we'll see is a, a series of suspensions. Um, with behaviors that will ultimately lead to a recognition for expulsion.
But, yeah, can I speak to that, because you're right, um, we are concerned. About ensuring ultimate means of corrections are used for suspension. And we wanna ensure that we're not disproportionately suspending any one subgroup of students, and so we were identified. As having some disproportionality issues, and Janet, Paul, and the team, including Mr. Dallar and myself. Worked on writing, um, our continuous improvement plan to reduce suspensions and expulsions across. Uh, multiple subgroups, let me be clear again, I'm not, we're not a red indicator in suspensions for all of our students, we're not suspending more students than any other place. We're overall, we're doing a, a pretty decent job across the state, it's just. Categories of students are disproportionately suspended compared to how many of them are in our schools.
The.
So, um, Mr. Dallar has already done some data analysis and a bunch of work with our assistant principals. Through our work of this plan to try and reduce suspensions and expulsions and try and support students in positive ways. Before the suspendable indicators occur.
And and so I think that, you know, uh, another point I wanna make about this shift here is that the legislature added this section that you see on the screen there in front of you. Um, they added this language to the very same statute that lists out. Almost all of the different charges that we can use to suspend a student. Uh, and so it's really relevant that, uh, this is there, because if we're not doing these things that, that the legislature is asking us to do. Arguably, we may lose our ability to engage in exclusionary discipline, so I think, I think the point is well taken, Ms. Robert, that this, this does. Affects the ability for any form of exclusionary discipline, including suspension, uh, leading up to expulsion, so. Um, the other aspect of this, uh, that has shifted over the years is, is more, uh, prescriptive language here about. Using alternatives to suspensions, about attendance issues, using, um, suspension as a last resort. You know, a- and we think about, and maybe, you know, for those of you who were previously indicators, right, think about. Being in a classroom, right, and there's a thing going on. I feel like it's very natural to assume, you know, the best way to move forward with this situation to ensure the safety of all twenty, twenty-five students in this class. Is to remove that individual from the class and c- control the situation, right? Um, and and I think that makes a lot of sense, um, but what we're called to do as, as educators today under California law is to. Try to do that maybe from the classroom, but not necessarily from the school itself. Uh, and try to find other avenues, other ways to address that behavior and correct it. And, yes.
Josh, hasn't, recently, within the last few years, haven't there been some, hasn't there been some legislation that restricts? Uh, to some extent, what, what can occur, especially at the elementary level with regard to suspensions? what, what can occur, especially at the elementary level with regard to suspensions?
Yeah, it's, it seems like every four years or so, uh, we have a, a new pairing back of ability for administrators to suspend for willful disruption and defiance. So for students who are mouthing off in class, saying inappropriate things, uh, that are not listening to teacher direction, oftentimes those teachers would refer that student to the office and then the administrator at the office would, you know, get some information, get some facts, get the student's side of the story and then issue a suspension for that type of behavior. And that has been pulled back all the way. So, uh, you are no longer allowed to expel any grade level for that type of offense. Uh, and then as of July one this year, uh, all grade levels are no longer allowed to suspend for that type of offense. So administrators are now prohibited by law from suspending students for that type of offense. Teachers actually still have the ability to suspend for that type of offense. Uh, and they can still do so this full year and, and until the law changes, they can continue to do so. It's just that the length of time of this suspension is much more limited. Uh, the obligation to meet with the parent upon the student returning is something that will become more taxing for, for a teacher to engage with. Um, but also, I think, uh, it might change how teachers approach uh, that, those interactions in that class and take ownership of what needs to be done to correct that student's behavior, rather than just referring the student out to the office to, to manage.
Well, is that what you're calling a suspension, is referring them out?
Uh, so, yeah, so the student will still be able to be removed from that class, but they won't be able to be sent home by the administrator.
And that's what you're calling a teacher suspension?
Correct, correct. Yeah, so they're suspended from that class period with that teacher for typically the rest of that day and the, the day after.
We used to call it in-house suspension.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And so I think, you know, a lot of districts are taking unique approaches to this change. Uh, some of them are creating actual classrooms that are designated places for students who are disappointed to go to, that, where they're still receiving curriculum instruction, but they'll push in some emotional, social emotional support. Um, people, aides to come in into the classroom and try to correct behavior. Uh, there's some concerns, uh, just generally speaking about, okay, if there's just one kid in that class, is that going to, you know, be manageable? Um, if there's only, you know, three referrals a week? Um, is that getting the bang for our buck from a perspective of teaching and having a, a real instructor ready, uh, for, for that student? Uh, are we being inclusive of our students with disabilities and, and students of color that are disproportionately, uh, disciplined according to the studies of the past? So all of that consideration is being done with regards to how do we manage, where do we put these kids? Um, because sometimes they're not, it's not necessarily a good plan to just simply just say, all right, go home. Right, if they have nothing, no parents to pick them up, um, pursuant to a suspension and if we're not able to suspend them because of this change in laws and not home.
So it sounds like those, those supports are actually having to be done kind of after the fact. The legislation came with no guidance as to how to do that. So we have to figure it out if it's a special ed student and the teacher in that classroom is not a special ed teacher. You know, I mean, it just sounds very complicated.
It, yeah, can be very complicated. Uh, they did give us a list of like the possible, um, ways to correct behavior, including something that's basic as having just a conference with the parent. Um, but yeah, they're, they're, they don't have a prescriptive like how-to guide. And, and so it's up to the team, uh, the administration team to kind of figure out, how do we insert these support measures, as you see on the slide there, right? It's basically trying to implement every form of our formal versions of discipline that take place. And how do we try to correct that behavior in a way to try as much as we can avoid that exclusionary, uh, form of discipline? Because that's what the legislature is calling us to do, to implement suspension as the last resort.
So, so in the case of a special education student who is quote suspended from, from the class for that day and the next day, just, um, in terms of a special education student, does that count to it in ten days?
Mm-hmm, it was. Um, and I think you're touching on another point that I want to make, which is that because the power has, and the tool, as I like to say, it's a tool in your toolbox has been taken away as an administrator with regard to willful disruption and defiance, uh, uh, suspensions. And now the emphasis is on the teacher to control that classroom and still use that, that tool, right? Um, well, the reason why that tool was taken out of our tool chest was because according to studies, again, that didn't do, in my opinion, a lot of work on figuring out societal reasons for why student misbehavior occurs, uh, but simply blaming the format of a suspension as the reason for student misbehavior and continuing student misbehavior. They saw that there were disproportionate rates of discipline for students of color and students with disabilities. And those, you know, presumably, I will say, uh, it, you know, were done by well-intentioned administrators trying to control a situation uh, over the past, you know, decades of, of education. Um, you know, nothing, a, a, absent, you know, intentional discrimination, you know, the vast majority of these decisions were in response to what the student was doing and to make sure that the campus was safe. Um, and so I don't see a reason why those same disproportionate rates might still occur when teachers are doing that discipline, right, versus administrators. Uh, you know, they're going to get the same type of training, the same sort of instruction um, on this issue from CDE, from our regulatory agencies, uh, which was, you know, not a whole lot. Um, and, and they're going to be responding to an actual incident that's occurring. And while the data might play out, you know, I think there's a lot more analysis than is to be done as to the source and the reasoning for why that misbehavior is happening in the first place. Whereas suspension and expulsion is a begation to that misbehavior. So I think the strategy is to, instead of focusing on, on, on a, you know, a debate, a, a sort of a discourse that has moved on and has already clearly set what the goalposts are now. Um, I think there's now attempting, well, we can't regulate better uh, what those rates of discipline are because statewide, you see district after district, um, you know, these disproportionate rates continue because we're trying to focus on the preemptive, the proactive, the supportive efforts before that behavior occurs. And that ultimately leads to lowering of that disproportionate rate. Uh, rather than having any judgment to say like a teacher or administrator is racist or sexist, that's not productive. What's productive is focusing in on trying to correct that behavior before it even occurs. And how do we give the students tools and understanding to prevent that misconduct from happening in the first place?
So how does that teach your, teach a class and dis- student?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, uh, you know, I think there's a lot of, uh, with, with you getting your credential these days, uh, part of implementing other means of corrections has been added to the list of requirements. So to become a teacher, uh, these days, you have to have some training and knowledge about how to wield these other means of correction and classroom management techniques in your classroom. So, um, my response to that would just seem to be, it's, you know, part of the job and it's certainly, it's been a struggle for administrators. It will be a struggle and continue to be for teachers. And we need to work together, um, rather than against each other to try to figure out reasonable solutions to correct that behavior.
But the principal can still back him or her up, uh, by take, relieving her of that student, as has always been the case?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think, I think there's still the ability for the principal to manage that situation on the campus, rather than resorting to exclusionary discipline where the kid is sent home.
Okay, in-house, in-house, yeah, we've done a lot of that.
Right.
As teachers.
Yes. Yeah, and then it'll, it'll continue, right? And I think, uh, we heard a lot from teachers after COVID and the return of the classrooms, that it was a real big struggle because a lot of students didn't have that structure when they were at, at home, right? And then coming back and having to be on their best behavior again was a bit of a, of a, of a taxing situation, right? Um, but I feel like last year we saw a lot of numbers kind of go back to what was in place before, uh, the pandemic. So I'm optimistic that we can get back on track to having better data before we're done. Thank you. And so all of that then leads me to say, how is this playing into expulsions? Well, it's playing into it in a really big way because for every expulsion other than the big five, we have to show and have to prove that secondary findings exist, which either is that because of the nature of the violation, the student is in continuing danger to the physical safety of the student or others, or the big one, which is that other means of correction are not feasible or have been attempted, but then have failed to address that student misbehavior. So very critical to your expulsion analysis when you are deciding whether or not to expel is going to often hinge on that prong of this secondary binding. And you'll have to decide, did the administration do enough? Did the team, the school site team, with the teachers included, the parents', um, involvement? Um, were they responsive to, and did they, uh, enact these other social emotional supports, trauma-informed practices, restorative justice practices to address that student behavior and attempt to train that student and educate that student to act differently, um, before potentially repeating that same mistake? And so I kind of like to look at this as, this is the scales of student discipline. You're not totally off-base if you resort to exclusionary discipline, it's a big five offense, right, to ensure safety. You have clear legal mandate to do that, um, in those instances. Outside of that, then the scales tend to be, um, in education law in 2024 at least, to be heavily weighted towards rehabilitating, educating that student on the site. So the big summary here, I'm just from a philosophical and purpose statement on student discipline, is that your administration team is going to be working really hard to make sure that the expulsion recommendations that come before you are either those big five or there are some significant issues with attempting other means of correction with that student to the point where we're at a loss for what to do next with that kid. And that kid probably needs a more dedicated approach to their individual situation that might be provided at an expulsion placement or some other off-site, out of district, uh, location. Any questions before I move on to the actual hearing?
You know, the only thing I'm going to do is, I'm not trying to put Chris Dollar on the spot, but if, anytime you want to jump in, because you're, you're our person on the ground here.
I would, thank you.
Mr. Austin? I have two questions. Um, at the beginning, you said that we, maybe I'll bring this up and you can answer it wherever at the end, or, or if it makes sense in the middle. You said that we're unique and that our board does, um.
Correct.
Can you provide some context on why that is and who chooses that and?
Uh, you choose that, the board chooses that.
Okay.
Uh, you could choose as a board to transition to do administrative panels in lieu of, of doing that hearing. If that were to occur, the way that the format would change is that that panel would be dealing with sometimes an hour, two hours long. Um, if you have a criminal, uh, defense attorney, sometimes six hours, it's not experience. Um, uh, hearings where you're going to have, you know, evidence, the, the issue of, right? All of that stuff is going to be moved towards administrative panel that will become adjudicators of, of that process. Then they will decide whether or not to still recommend expulsion and forward that recommendation to you for consideration with a, essentially a summary of what occurred at the hearing, what the charges were, what the evidence is. Not for you to kind of sit through that material, but you're definitely taking a, um, a secondary role uh, to that process and kind of looking at, um, what your recommendation is from the administration. And you're not going to have the families in front of you in, 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 in most instances unless they wanted to make public comment. Um, and then you're able to make your own quick deliberations based on the information that you have. And that's what most districts do these days.
When you say most, like how unique are we, were they the only one you've ever heard of? Or there's not even twenty percent of them do it?
Yeah, I would say, I'm, I will generalize, you know, I don't have the, the actual data. But, um, you are unique for your size of district, I would say. Most of the districts that I see that still do board-level expulsions are typically rural districts where there's one schoolhouse, maybe a hundred fifty kids, two hundred fifty kids. Um, an elementary school district is another frequent, um, purveyor of, of having their board uh, do that expulsion. Um, but that doesn't necessarily exclude you from continuing to do this practice if you as a board want to. That's fair.
Yeah, I think to provide some historical context here, um, this board has traditionally, over my tenure, prided itself on doing expulsions, feeling that the students had a right to come before us, you know, as sort of the court of last resort, and to make their case and, uh, receive their hearing. And I think in many districts, and I suspect probably in ours as well, uh, the, the prevailing, the feeling is that it is easier and preferred by the administration to have an administrative panel. It, it suits their purposes, but we have felt that it did not suit ours. That's what I, I mean.
I think during the last time we discussed it, it was the board likes to have the firsthand knowledge. And, um, it kind of gives us a deep look into what's gone on at the school sites. And I think it reminds me of most boards, most boards. That was, that's kind of what swayed me.
It was a big, uh, I think one of the reasons that transitions have typically occurred that I've seen over the last couple of years. I, I don't have a recommendation either, but, um, I see that transition because of just the, that because laws that are coming out and the shift to focus to becoming more other means of correction focused, uh, that has meant less of a role for those boards. And so boards get out of practice because there's less expulsions coming their way. Uh, and so then, uh, they're not familiar with all of the, the due process rights and the, and the particular rules and procedures that, uh, that apply for these situations, uh, because they only see, you know, expulsion a couple times a year, a couple times a year. So, um, we're starting, that's why I see a lot of districts shifting from that because they're concerned about their board being able to be able to withstand potentially these long hearings, uh, but also to ensure that that hearing is run by all the Ts across and all the Is dotted. Um, and instead allow for the administration to take that laboring order to, to do that process.
So, so is our general consensus that we want to keep going like this, if that feels right?
I do.
I do.
I do.
My two, my two, my two.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I'll just add that I feel, you know, some of the people who, who we say this to before, I feel like it's one of the most important and creative work we do that the public doesn't know about, because they're confidential, but that we, as a board, um, not infrequently, Chris Dollar can speed to this, well, we generally go along with the recommendation, but we not infrequently tweak it. You know, and some of that comes from input from a site administration in terms of, you know, we are required by law to bring this to you, but we really feel we can continue to work with this student for a while. And sometimes it's, the law requires us to bring this to you and we strongly support the law in this regard. You know, we, we get a little bit of guidance, but we also ask, I think, questions that are meaningful to the student as well and family. You know, even if we know the answer or feel pretty certain what the answer is going to be, I feel that that, and, and I'm sure it would be the same if it were school administration. But for them to see people they don't necessarily know and haven't seen before, but asking questions and really, in a, in a manner, I think we do a pretty good job of, of expressing that it's a matter that comes from caring and concern for the student and the rest of the students on the campus, for, for the campus community. Uh, that that's an experience for the student and the element to know that, that, um, people are paying attention and care and really, really care. Yeah.
I, I think it's, for, for, for me, I think it's important for us as a, as, as a window onto some things that are happening on the school set campuses. And I, I believe that we, we learn lessons about things that, that are important for us to know about as trustees. That's one of the things that I certainly, I've gotten out of it. Um, I think the other thing is that when we're doing an expulsion, we're taking away the student's right to attend our schools. We're, we're taking away a fundamental right from them. And if we're, if we're going to be doing that, I think that, that we need to provide a student, um, that, the type of hearing that, that helps them understand the gravity of the situation. the type of hearing that, that helps them understand the gravity of the situation. It helps us also understand what we're doing as a school, the school trustees. And frankly, I mean, if I were a parent and I was brought before administrative hearing, a panel of administrators, I'd feel like the things were stacked against me. Because, you know, I mean, the administrators were the ones that already had decided that my child should be expelled. And I don't know that I would feel like I could be a parent.
Well, just to provide some clarity, the administrative panels typically meet administrators that are not at the school where the student is located. So ideally, they would be asking those pointed questions. And, you know, ideally, if there were to be a transition at this corrupt districts, the type of information and insider knowledge should be shared by the administration when communicating that administrative recommendation. But your points are well taken, Mr. Ross.
Well, I also knew that, I'll shut up after this, that sometimes I'll read the packets we get, but this is a slam dunk. And then we, and then we hear the extenuating circumstances and we hear what the school has to say. And as Mrs. Shepherd said, and I think sometimes we come to solutions that maybe were not recommended initially.
Well, and then I think that's a good launching point, just talking about what should these sort of clarifying questions look like or what is best practice to be incisively investigating in a student's life, you know, related to the expulsion. So first I want to then back up to, you know, what are the duties of the board? Basically, we've been discussing this, right? To be fair, to be impartial, to be open-minded. So I think all of that seems very relevant and prevalent already within the board. But importantly, too, to review the evidence, decide what's relevant and credible and how much weight to attach to it. I think that speaks to what, to what you're just saying, right? If there are, here's what the, you know, the bevy of the offenses. Do these other extenuating circumstances move the scales to some extent on that? And how much weight should be applied with regard to those other circumstances? That's all part of your duty under the law. Another aspect of this that I think we all need to be a lot more diligent to make sure that this is indeed happening is that when the board meets to deliberate and make the final decision on an expulsion matter, not the vote to approve the expulsion in open session or report out, but actually like putting your brains together and debating over like in 1283 men in the movie, right? To actually like decide essentially, you know, what ultimately should happen with the student. That needs to be done just amongst you all. That the superintendent, Lisa, Chris, all those folks need to be excused from the room because if they are here present during that time, then the parent and the student have the right to bring their representation in the student into that session, into that meeting to hear those deliberations. Mr. Shepherd.
So we're, I'd say we're really good about that. But, but a question like that is, if a question arises during deliberations, can we go out and ask Mr. Dollar, you know, we, we need some clarification about this? Or do you know if this happened?
Yeah, as long as it's not about the deliberative decision itself, but it's like a process or what options are already provided in our policy or in law to act, you know, such as like what we said earlier, can we suspend an expulsion for a big five offense, right? Something like that where it's a procedural, it's not to the heart of the crux of the facts of what's before you, then yes, you can, you can either go out inside to consult or you can invite them in. And then to expel a district must prove essentially three things, that the student committed that expellable offense, right? Very straightforward to put on the screen, but actually really challenging to do in the reality. The district has jurisdiction, which of course is heavily something that is something that's constantly going to be litigated as we're dealing with social media and off campus, online types of communication and text messaging and direct messaging and all of that. And then were other means of correction considered? While not necessarily critical to prevent you from moving forward with the big five offense, I still think because of that emphasis that the legislature has given, that you should still consider what other means of correction could have been used even in those big five scenarios. And that might go towards whether or not you ultimately decide to go forward with the full expulsion or whether or not you want to suspend that expulsion, for example. And then that evidence, that order must be substantial and be relevant to the charges. That's what it says in law. That is a great tipping off point for what I like to say, to ask or not to ask. That's the question. So what are good questions to ask during this expulsion process versus what are not recommended or bad questions to ask during this process? So again, it has to be, go back one slide again. We're really looking at your role being about the charges that are before you, the other means of correction that have been attempted prior to that incident, and your jurisdiction. Not to have a referendum on the student as a person. Not to have a referendum on the student as a student. But we're really specifically looking, the law is really prescriptive here in having us take a look at what are the charges, what are the other means of correction? And so sometimes I see districts struggle with the sort of morality play that might take, you know, might take hold. Where if a student, you know, did a really bad thing, it was a big five offense, but they're a great person, they're a community advocate, they're a football team. You know, there are certain other aspects of their life that might take more of a priority or have a thumb on the scale for that particular board member. And that's not appropriate. That's not the role of the board. We really need to be focused on that charge at that period of time and what could have prevented it leading up to it. Let me get through these questions, then I'll go to you all for questions on this. So some examples of good questions to ask, right? Very procedural questions, like, did they get the right notices? Did they get them timely? Did a manifestation determination occur? Or a special ed or section five of court? These are standard procedural questions, totally appropriate to give clarity if you're not clear on them from the record that's been presented to you. Jurisdictional questions, right? Very critical to the analysis. So how is this act related to school activity or attendance? Well, it was a text message and, and although it was between these two people and the victim didn't receive the text message, it was about the victim. And then the victim heard about it because there was this rumor, you know, all of that. So all of that can be explained by the administration as to how that jurisdiction applies and whether or not it should. And of course, the student has the right with their representation to contest that and say, no, the jurisdiction should not apply because of X. It's also appropriate to ask, is the student contrite? Is the student apologetic? Do they recognize that what they did was a wrong, was misconduct? And have they, you know, made amends for that? And has that even included the student who was the victim potentially of that? And are things okay on, you know, in the grand scheme of the child world? You know, are these kids playing together in the park, going to the same birthday parties without issue? And, you know, and there's not, and so maybe that student could return to school from the suspension pending expulsion because they're getting a lot of just fines other community at, you know, venues. But would not be recommended is things like trying to figure out what's going on with criminal proceedings, with the criminal court case that might be going where the DA might be pursuing charges against that student. While that can be somewhat relevant in terms of like, did the kid get arrested? And just getting a sense for the severity of the offense and how law enforcement interpreted the severity of it, it's not really our place to get involved in the weeds of that criminal case. It shouldn't be relevant and I would recommend it not be relevant towards your analyzing your decision because the expulsion hearing is an administrative decision regarding their ability to safely come to your campus and remain on your campus. Not about whether or not they should be criminally charged or have legal consequences in their own life for that. Also not appropriate is a question about, again, kind of the inner workings of this morality or of the religion or not religion of a particular student. You don't want to be accused of religious discrimination, for one thing. But also, I don't think it's appropriate or our role to be doing, asking questions to suggest that the student's not doing enough to self-improve their own thinking with regard to how that might apply to faith or not apply to faith. That's really the role of the parent, in my mind. And then a tricky one is how far back in time do we look with the student? And I get this question a lot, it's not just from, from, you know, this district or others in the area, this is pretty across the board, even for administrators on administrative panels ask this question, what's relevant? Well, the law says it's what, what is relevant is that which is what a reasonable person in that circumstance should, you know, would consider relevant in that circumstance. But I also look at this as being applicable to what is our standard that has to be met? And that has to be relevant to the charges. So for example, if a student is in high school and they have misbehavior that occurred in elementary school or even seventh grade, is that really relevant to who, you know, what that kid's decision-making is that then led to this particular charge or led to this particular offense? I mean, you know, I think you can make an argument, you know, to go back, you know, decently far, but four years is kind of where I think that might be too far, depending on the age of the student. You know, we're really looking ideally at the setting where that student is. The facts of that earlier circumstance might be really relevant. So if they were suspended for saying the F word in class, that really relevant to a drug-related offense in middle school? Probably not, right? So I don't think you need to relitigate or reanalyze a lot of those old historical features that might be given to you as part of discipline logs and incident logs and heck, even attendance, right? Like, why were you absent a lot in fourth grade or fifth grade? And it might reveal, oh, well, you know, dad died or mom died or, you know, some traumatic event might have occurred and maybe that kind of helps you understand the student more, but it's not really relevant to focus on those data points for what the student's doing now. If the student is, you know, good attendance since then, then that shouldn't have dictated, you know, why they engaged in this particular misconduct. And so I think we really want to be careful because if we start expanding the scope of the questions, it can lead the meetings to get longer, but then it can also lead to claims from the student that, that we're really considering irrelevant evidence and potentially even evidence that they would say, you know, could have colored your decision-making and then would call that into question. So I want to protect the board here from that type of criticism here. So that's why I set the marker around four years being maybe just too far. Three years seems pretty relevant. I mean, if we think about how long, you know, many of you have been on the board, right? The last, for many of you going up for election, right? It's been about four years. So think about how different the world was, you know, four years ago. That's how different it is for a kid and maybe even on an accelerated basis because of just the development of a child during that time. In the sense of the other question.
Oh, yes. So in regard to going back, it would be, it's a good way, has been used to show what means of discipline have been used leading up and so far. So now, in, instead of going back too far, I suppose those things could be listed. So they're listed, right?
Right, they'll still be part of the logs that you'll receive as part of the expulsion packet. So it'll still be there for you to consider. I'm not saying it's zero percent consideration, but I think that you should still be thinking about, is that really relevant to be having your incisive investigative questions as a board about in that moment? And instead, should the focus be instead on the more current, the more relevant of these particular charges that are before you? Because that's what the evidentiary standard is calling into.
Okay, thank you. So Josh, it's my understanding that when an expulsion is brought before us, it's for a particular occurrence at a particular time.
Correct.
And that's what we should primarily be focused on. Is that one, you know, rather than, I wasn't this kid, it's, oh, two years ago, so she did this. You know, what, what happened then? That, that it is, and to me, that speaks to fairness to the student, that we're not, we're not, you're not on trial for your life.
Right.
You know.
Yeah, this is not Mr. Trump's trial, right?
Right, right, that you are, you are here before us based upon a particular incident that occurred. And, and we can take some of these things into consideration a little bit just in terms of trying to have a sense of the student. But you're here before us, just, and even if something that had occurred five years ago may feel particularly heinous to me. That's not my job at this time. It's just so, I think that's, that's something I try to keep in mind is, is let's keep focused on why we're here today, you know, what this packet before us right now, that it says what the particular charge is. And that can be hard sometimes, but.
Right, and like just the sense of saying, like, the, we do have to, we still do have to look back beyond just this incident or those other means of correction and see what's tried. It's just that it gets murky as to how far back is going to be really relevant to this particular situation, which is what you're speaking of. All very good thoughts. So just, you know, kind of just running through this a little bit faster here. So witnesses and documents, you're familiar with these things and where these different sources might come from. I use this as the launching point to talk about that technical rules of evidence do not apply to expulsion hearings. And I think this is helpful for the public that may be listening, they do understand is this is not like expected to be lawyers litigating before a seasoned judge. You know, you are lady bull for all intents and purposes, that experienced, yes. And you'll have experienced administrators too, right? That know the rules, that know the procedures, but you're not expected to be a lawyer in this format. And that allows for the parent, if they wish to not be represented, to allow for them to have a credible ability to defend and represent their child at that hearing themselves. And be able to go and proffer essentially before you. And also because of that, hearsay evidence is admissible where it's not in other settings in the legal world. But the law does specifically say that you cannot recommend an expulsion based on that hearsay alone. So just real quick diving into hearsay. It's a statement that is made other than by witness testifying in the hearing that's being offered, proves that something happened, that proved the truth of what is being asserted. So if I say, you know, Lisa hit me just before this meeting because she's upset at me for giving these policies to her, uh, too late. You know, that's me making a statement about what happened, but you didn't, you know, but you didn't see that happening, right? Well, that can still be permissible speech and still be valid evidence because I was a party to that incident, right? Like I was, I was directly involved in that matter. But if I say have Mandy, who, and I, you know, she makes a comment about what occurred, but she didn't actually see what happened, right? And she's hearing from someone else about the interaction and the, and the debate that occurred between us, then her statement is just hearsay statement, right? She wasn't there, she wasn't a personal observation of that. And then she's, you know, we're just now testifying as to what Mandy said and what Mandy heard, not actually hearing from Mandy herself. So all of that is hearsay.
So we would give more to it then if Mandy said that she heard you scream and saw your bruise?
Right, so we would give more weight, right, for those personal observations and what she heard and saw, right? We would give more weight to that than what she heard through the rumor, right? That makes sense, but that's generally this concept. Similarly, if a student is saying, I did this, right? And they say that to an administrator, but they refuse to testify at the expulsion hearing. And the administrator says, well, that student said that they did it to me and that's why I'm moving forward with this recommendation for expulsion for you. That needs to be given more credibility, more weight because it's an admission by that party to them, right? And so that is allowed to be given more weight for you to use in that expulsion process. But just simply that principle restating what occurred and they weren't physically present or didn't observe what happened, but they're just hearing from their vice principal and their counselor and the teacher about what happened, but none of those folks are there to testify before you, before you. You can't use that principle statement as non-hearsay evidence. So you have to have some testimony, some documentary evidence, or that administrator has to be able to say, there was an admission by the student and that's why we're moving forward with that recommendation.
So sometimes when we see, we'll see a discipline log. So sometimes when we see, we'll we'll see a a discipline log on a student and it will have entries regarding student behavior.
Right.
Um. Are those, is that considered hearsay evidence, or does it depend on what what is included in that statement, whether it's hearsay evidence or not?
Right, so it will kind of depend on on what's included um in in that, uh generally speaking, it's going to be a form of documentary evidence. But those discipline log entries aren't necessarily going to be about that specific incident. If they are, then that's a piece of evidence, like hey, someone took the time to write out a report about what happened and try to capture. What happened, so we should give more weight to that. Um but because they're not, if that individual who wrote that note is not there to testify. Then that makes that communication essentially hearsay evidence. Because they're not there to actually testify as to what is being said, and if it's just their recollection and their quoting, you know, what happened. That may affect, you know, whether or not it's it's being submitted as that it's evidence. Um another aspect of this is for fear declarations, so those can be submitted as non-hearsay evidence. Student would need to come before you and and provide reasoning, so their student witness. They need a prime uh explanation as to why they'd be subjected to physical or psychological harm, if they had to actually testify before you. And provide that in prime.
Yeah, at what point would they come be come before us?
Yeah, so if you decide that their justification, that their argument, that they would be subjected to unreasonable. Physical or psychological harm is not persuasive. Um then that student is not obligated to show up um and testify, but. You wouldn't be able to consider their written testimony in that circumstance. So if the student decides, well, I show up and testify, that might add to the weight of credibility and and evidentiary decision making. Or if it's still going to be. You know, in their mind, traumatic, it wasn't in your mind, but it was to the point where it would cause them harm, they may choose to not show up. And take the potential risk, Chris, did you want to?
Yeah, so typically in a with a fear declaration, again, you need at least one primary piece of evidence in order to expel a student. Right, we need to present those in a hearing, one primary, that is an admission by the student, a witness testimony. That I witnessed the incident occur or an admission of guilt. We need one primary piece of evidence, everything else can be hearsay, and that's fine, that gives you context for the disciplinary situation, am I accurate?
You're on the line.
So in a case where we have a fear declaration, typically what you'll see is you'll see uh uh two sheets. The first sheet will be um an explanation of why they can't testify in person. And they have to state in that declaration why they're fearful, that they would experience some sort of psychological harm. Or at be a risk of physical harm by appearing in person to testify um in a non-anonymous manner, correct?
You're on.
So then the next, you guys have to consider in that hearing whether or not that's, you know, um valid, right?
Yep.
So then the next sheet of paper then would be their statement in in which their name is going to be redacted. Um in which they are testifying via that written statement. Um and that is the primary piece of evidence in that case, so you typically see these in harassment bullying cases, you see these in. You know, sexual battery cases, sexual assault sort of cases, that's where you'll typically see a fear declaration.
Yeah, especially if there's, uh if it becomes very newsworthy, right? So uh if there were, for example, just pulling from the headlines, if a student were to make an anti-Semitic comment or a racist or sexist comment. And then that elevates and now, you know, it becomes widely known about what happened. Um but no, the papers aren't able to identify who the student was, maybe the general student population doesn't necessarily know. Who that victim is, for them to like come forward and say, yeah, I was the one that went into the bathroom and saw this written on the stall. Um you know, that could be very traumatic for them to convey and reveal their identity or 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 sexual assault victim, for example. If they were to be confronted with, and have to be across the table and then be cross-examined. By uh the representation or the students who actually committed that offense and has been alleged to commit that offense, rather. Um then that can be pretty traumatic for for that student to go through that whole process. But that code does allow us to expel on on the basis of a non-testimony, only when there's been a fear declaration that you approve, right? Uh another aspect to consider too is that um student silence cannot be used against them as an admission of guilt. Uh it can certainly factor into your weighing of the facts and the evidence that's presented before you, so. If you only hear one side of the story from the administration and their witnesses and you hear nothing but. Their their witnesses and statements submitted by the family to talk about how great this kid is otherwise. Um you know, then that's going to factor into what you ultimately decide to do with that with that expulsion, but that silence is not in and of itself.
If the student opts to defend during the expulsion hearing.
Right.
Is that not an admission of guilt that 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 is not hearsay evidence?
Correct, so that would be an admission of guilt and it would be non-hearsay evidence that you could use as justification to expel.
But if they use the blame and say, I did it, but he did it more and he's like, then what?
Yeah, actually.
They don't stop to it.
We 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 laughed, but because I don't, I don't think that's not uncommon, right?
All the time, yeah.
Right, so that's why we're laughing, it's because it's not often, you know, relied upon quote unquote defense, right?
Yeah.
Um and you know, what is happening with other students may be relevant from ensuring that the district is acting fairly. And consistently on matters, um the issue that I would highlight here is that. We don't just get full blown discretion, like you might have seen the headlines talking about. Private schools having the ability to just sort of summarily decide um on things, we have to recall the action by the law. To consider all these other means of correction, to consider whether the student's in danger, which requires analysis. That is much more individualized than just simply saying. Admitted the offense, we have proof of that, all right, exclude, right? That's not how we operate, um and so. As a result, what is happening with other students can, again, it can be relevant. But it shouldn't be determinative because we really should be focused on this particular kid's situation and their vitritness and their. Um responsiveness to corrective action by the administration.
Right.
Um and then moving kind of towards the path of actually ordering an expulsion and what happens afterwards. Uh you do have the ability to issue that full expulsion or suspend it, you do have that option, you actually have the ability to just decide. The student's not going to be expelled at all, in which case it actually creates a right to that student to immediately be able to return to that campus the next day. After the board meeting essentially. Um uh and there's no way for the administration to stop the, you know, we would have to provide late notice to the victim. Uh and their and their family, um uh you know, of what's going on to and try to work on safety plans to ensure their safety on campus, whether that's. Uh you know, dealing with uh restrictions on where to be on the quad or or how they're going to deal with passing periods, right? So it needs to be very well considered if you are going to go against the recommendation for expulsion. From and you should consider it still from a due process perspective, but also you want to consider the full ramifications. Not just so simple as yes or no, um and and that's all that you have to worry about, we still have to worry about, again, that constitutional duty. To ensure that our campuses are safe and and can we do that if we say no, if we vote no? That's what needs to be running through your mind at that point. Um and then also um there are limits on the term of the expulsion. And I refer to it as the initial term, because if a student is going to be readmitted after the expulsion. Generally speaking, they have to meet your rehabilitation plan that you set up, you know, I'm sure all of you are very familiar with with what these look like. Uh they can include community service, can include having a set percentage of attendance at their new educational place. Um more and more, we're hearing from the legislation and more more lobbyists than the actual legislature itself. Um talking about whether or not we need to deal with or formalize the transition process. So one of the things that we have seen um is that principals, once they get that expulsion order in place. There's an expectation that's created amongst the staff as well as the parents of that school, that that student's not going to come back to their school. And that's not how student expulsions work, it's not how the education code works. It's expected that that student would be allowed to return to that same school site where that same victim might be present. Um at the end of that initial term of of the expulsion. Um so there's a lot of discussion as to how involved should the principal be in understanding the progress that that student is making? With their rehabilitation and with their efforts to return to campus. So that way they can kind of get a sense for, is this is this kid coming back in six months, three months? Um one month, or is it they're not on the track to to come back? And it's going to be a little bit longer and how the impetus now in the law, I would say, is for that principal to not just say. All right, don't have to think about that kid anymore, but actually take ownership and say, this is still my kid, this is still a kid that belongs to this school, that should be at this school. Um how can we help this kid get back and how can I as the principal and our team at the school site? Do more to try and work on bringing that kid back, and that's the next frontier. Uh student discipline that I see us dealing with over the next five to 10 years. And then finally, just to codify that, the student can be readmitted, um shall be readmitted actually, uh unless the board makes a finding. That they've not met the terms of that rehabilitation plan or continue to pose a danger to campus safety or otherwise. Uh so that's, that's our kind of training and trying to try to synthesize a lot of concepts and a lot of ideas on expulsion in a short amount of time, so Miss Shepherd.
Yeah, I have a question, I'm going to direct it to Kristal. Um are there concerns that you have had about the manner in which we conduct our hearings?
That's an awkward question.
Oh, well, I don't think, I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
Yeah, um you know, we've had a lot of change in the board and, you know, I think. There was a lot more hearings, I'd say 10 years ago, right? There were a lot more expulsion hearings and we had a a very veteran school board at that point. There's been a lot of change in transition of the board and we've also had less expulsions and more stipulated agreements over the last 10 years. And I think um you know, running legally. Client expulsion hearings has become more technical over the last 10 years and um I think it's um. It's important to run a tight professional expulsion hearing. In order for it to be legally defensible. And so it's it's tricky, right? When you do one or two expulsions here, it's tricky to do that.
Yeah, one of one of the issues that I think from like a statewide perspective, that I think just everyone is struggling with, I think, is that. The times are so unique right now, um and so when there are things like. A racist or anti-Semitic type of behavior that's exhibited um by some of our students. The way in which board members can react to that can be some at times perceived differently than might have been their intention. Uh and so the the sort of commentary is something that in an expulsion hearing, which is a very significant due process matter. If there's not enough care and attention to what's being said in that moment, and it's more of a visceral reaction to. Um what they're experiencing, what they're seeing, um then that can potentially be used against the district. If they were to appeal to the county board, for example, or file a writ to try to uh you know overturn the expulsion. So there's just a a, I think there's a greater need for more experience, more training, but at the same time. The experience is going to drop as expulsions become less frequent, so I think from a forecasting and future perspective. That's just a general concern that our firm has generally got, or is there?
Yeah, it's it's difficult, and and I don't need to put you on the spot, I think it's difficult that during the hearing. You know, we can't say, is it okay to ask this question, you know, so I think it. For me, it's it's us being really mindful what our role is, what we can consider and what we shouldn't consider. And that and that can be, you know, we can't say to each other during the formal hearing that's recorded, it can be used. Or an appeal to say, you know, someone couldn't say, you know, Miss Shepherd, it's not really an appropriate question. In this particular circumstance.
Right.
Um so it 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 requires, for me at least, I was thinking like, oh, a lot of self-monitoring. You know, really thinking about, does this pertain? Why do I, you know, why is it important that, you know, eight years ago, the kid? Was suspended because he pulled the chair out from someone who was trying to sit down, you know, or something, what? What does that mean, you know, if if five years ago, the kid was torturing animals or something, I might think that could give us quite, but it's kind of. It it's it's tricky, and I think you're right, we did have, you know, I've been on the board 15 years and. We had more hearings 15 years ago and um still not a lot, you know, but and and usually. The end of the year, you know, that's sort of the same old story, but um. I I think it it's really important to me to have that, so. You know, really think before asking a question, what is this going to gain me, is it appropriate? Is it um, does it, does it apply directly to the the first page of this? Paper that says we are bringing this expulsion before you because of this? Um and not getting too, you know, either personal or.
And and you are an informed board, right? Um and so you are a a, you know. Attentive to what developments are happening in the law and with the student population and and all that. But you know, your administrators are on the ground, right, and and they're here to the ground, they're experiencing on a daily basis different updates. The other issue that I will say um is coming up is uh there's language differences, I'm not speaking about like Spanish or or Chinese or Mandarin or anything like that. I'm speaking about just slang, right? Um Gen Z slang is uh something else, I will say, um and sometimes it helps to know the assignments as the kids say. Um and and be attentive to understanding what these different things means, where. Your administrators who are dealing with this population on a daily basis have a lot more understanding and can process quicker. Uh what these different things means, uh whereas at an expulsion hearing, it's going to take a lot of time to have educate and bring folks up to speed, so just an example of. Some of the extension of time and and issues that pop up at the hearing, yes, Mary?
Couple of things, um. Uh in my experience, uh our, we did used to have more hearings than we have now. In recent years, there's been a trend toward encouraging um simulated expulsions. But over all the time that we've had expulsion hearings. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I only recall one that was appealed. And uh even when we've had advocates present for the student. Um only one was appealed and to the county office and then. That. Person took it to the appellate court and we were upheld. All the way, so we have, the fact that we're having this um training should not suggest to anyone who's watching. That we're have not been handling things well, because I I believe that we have.
And that one was appealed to the state's Supreme Court.
Okay, all the way.
I, I remember it.
Remembered too.
Yeah.
So but that's the only one that I that I can think of that has even gone to the county office, but my question is. How, when, you know, we have the two determinations, we have the um. Nature of the act and we have uh. What is it called? The other other.
Secondary.
Other means, yeah, other means.
So you're talking about secondary findings?
We're talking about why why we made our decision, is it based on nature of the act?
Yeah, yeah, so we we have to first determine that the incident occurred as described, and so that's where the primary evidence is important. And then there's secondary findings, which is due to the nature of the act that it's posing a physical danger for that student to be on campus, right? Not psychological danger, and then it's also, or it's got to be, we've been, you know, basically other means of correction are not applicable.
And under the other means, one, um. It seems like sometimes you you'll get a student that has a discipline. History as long as mine aren't.
Right, yes.
And they don't.
A pattern of behavior, we like to call it.
It, pardon me?
A pattern of behavior.
Yes, and so uh while. It the the offense that brought them to expulsion.
Right.
May have been one of the big five or whatever. And the school might have decided that, well, you know, to to advise us that we really think we could continue to work with the student. Um the history of their disciplinary um. The actions against them, it's sort of like. It was the straw that broke the camel's back.
Right.
So how far back are you saying? In looking at a behavior history, we should go back three years?
I'm I'm recommending you go no farther than four for. Giving excessive weight to that information. You can still consider uh information and and things that happened beyond that timeframe. Um but really, the the goal of the law here with regard to the discipline is to. Meet the student where they're at right now and decide. Is this student able to learn from their behavior at this campus or is it creating a danger? At this campus? And that's really the crux of those secondary findings, right? Uh and so I think it's very relevant what's happened in the last year with discipline, in the last two years of discipline.
Okay.
Three years can be shaky, but if it's overall painting the picture, pattern of behavior. Uh that is relevant, right? We've tried, you know, inside of camera.
That that works into the other means.
Right, right. Um and that can definitely be considered and definitely justify a decision to expel that student.
So and also, Josh, when you're saying. That the uh the administration, of course, I think, but in terms of high school, but we certainly see middle school students. Um and on occasion, we'll see an elementary student, but in. In terms of like high school students. Is it the responsibility then, did I hear you right, of the the high school administration to maintain? Contact with community school, if that's the alternative placement? To uh be gauging on some regularity, how this student is um progressing?
Yeah, I don't think there's a um. Strict legal obligation to be connected with that student. I think it's best practice to be connected. There are certain circumstances, like if it's a kid in core school or juvenile hall, for example. Where there may be obligations uh that do exist to meet and be with the juvenile hall team and get a. Of a rise of what's going on in that student's life. But generally speaking, if they're going to a county community school. Um.
We're supposed to work with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we know, we don't know really what happens after the night of our hearing.
And deals with it.
Right.
Mister Dowler stays in uh informed about.
Right. Right. Cause it cause the district is choosing to do that and it wants to do that.
He's our delegate.
To encourage students to return.
And then if the student is going to return back to the school, oftentimes that principal then will.
Be involved with it.
What happened? What happened?
And structuring the plan and all that.
Chris, we've been. We've been principal, make sure that they've done the things they're supposed to do and. You know, kind of get get the student back on track and only meet with them before they reentry. You know, so they they're involved in that.
Right, right. There's just not a legal like. Here's your timeline, here's how many times you have to meet, there's nothing like that yet, but that's in conversation. At the lobbying.
Yeah, I don't I don't think anybody on this board. I would be surprised if they felt that. We got rid of that kid and they're never coming back. I think the thrust for all of us is. What would be best for that student? And what would be best for the school?
Right.
Through the lens of, we want to um. Rehabilitate the behavior so that the student can come back and be ours. I think that's every everybody's goal.
I mean, after listening to your presentation for me, because I don't, I've never sat in one, I haven't seen anything, it's the questioning part.
Right.
And how how you question, what you question, and how far those questions go to. Just the items or are your parents divorced?
Right.
Did you, you know, are you homeless? Did you live something like, how how far does that go?
Yeah, we know, we can't, we can't ask.
No, I don't I don't know, like so, but that to me, that's where. Where you get in trouble, right, in terms of if you're veering off of. You know, kind of what what's brought forward in terms of that process.
But I will have to say that I'm a human being. And when I see, you know, a child before me in an expulsion hearing and the soles of their shoes are flapping on.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the parents are obviously very hardworking.
It's tough.
People and, you know, appalled that their child is here. I am moved by circumstances that are apparent to me. I am.
Yeah, and and I would say it's the responsibility of the administration to also consider those things.
To tape up those shoes?
Absolutely, when when making, if they're going to ultimately make still that recommendation for expulsion and and ideally. That recommendation was that carefully considered, should consider those elements.
But there is part of it for us. Um a benefit that we that we receive. I I think we need to put it on your paycheck. Um Mister Dowler has a long history with uh community school. And student discipline and all that, so. If he brings something forward to us, I have. Confidence that uh. That he that he either knows or was able to get the backstory and that. This is this is righteous kind of.
Right, I think uh what we're speaking to is is that um. You know, when we feel those emotions, right, in the expulsion hearing, that we're also considering how the questions might. Um impact with just general process and procedure that is very legally prescriptive and I'll I'll use this time to segue to the. Fact that there's book in front of you uh that Mister Dowler has provided each of you um. And talks a lot about that reasonable process. It's an how-to guide. On how to run these hearings and that's why I didn't go into a lot of the weeds in the presentation because.
Have you read this book? Can you review it?
I I did a really thorough skim of of it.
That was a good one.
Uh I think eighteen minutes, I think, is what I was on the clock for 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 that, so. Um uh so, yes.
They looked over at the budget guy. That's that's.
You ever attorney reading books now? Like, is it a novel or something?
Yeah, yeah. The plagiarized contents of this book, will we be seeing them under a honest myth?
Uh no, we have our own, we have uh. We got the other book, but we have our own here, but. Uh available to us with a good read. But yeah, my point is like that every board member, whether they are on the board currently or will be on the board. Should be intimately familiar with everything that's in that book.
It's a very serious obligation, it will be addressed that we need to.
That's correct, that's correct.
So, okay, to ask or not to ask? The good questions, are we asking Mister Dowler or and or the student? Because often the board has a chance to ask the student something.
Correct.
Well, I'm gonna be like more hesitant now to ask anything, I think. So I'd like to delve into that, look at the book. Do you know, anybody, if the book tells us how to deal with what the board?
Types of questions, if it's.
To the student.
Yeah, that that's probably in there is the types of questions. There's probably a list of types of questions that should be asked. And if there's not, then I, it's indoor as other book for sure. Yeah, so there's none in that book, but they do have like some uh suggested witness questions that could be asked during uh certain proceedings that are. A little bit more um. Need that care and attention than certain other situations that are more familiar to us. So for example, for sexual assault. There's very specific ideas about what types of. Graphic, but still, you know, attempting to try to walk the narrative of respect and and well-intentioned. Um questioning uh uh of uh witnesses during that time. So that can be. If if the administration or the student representation is not asking those questions on direct or across examination. Then that might be a question that you, if it's relevant, could consider asking, but. Um really, those are intended to be more witness questions in the book that you have there. Um the questions that I put on the slide are examples of the types of questions that we should be looking for.
The witness question. Right. Now, the student has a chance to say what they say.
Right.
And it would seem. Uh unfeeling not to have any questions back with them, right? So, I mean, to say nothing. So I want to know what kinds of things are right. Like, I've heard this question, um a board member. Do you think you've learned something from this experience, something like that? So how would that apply?
Yeah, I mean, I can speak to the contriteness, right? So I had that on the on the slide, that that is a valid question that you can you can ask as a student contrite.
Yeah, it's contrite, it's.
So if you can kind of, so I was trying to explain that there's like procedural questions, evidentiary questions, jurisdictional questions. But also speaking to the student and their own understanding of the consequence of their actions. So if if your question is along those lines, those are appropriate to ask.
Hmm, so do you understand the consequence of what you're asking?
Right, valid question, absolutely.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. That's possible.
I have two questions on. One is on regarding stipulated expulsions. Um what role do does the board have um in reviewing something that's been stipulated and already generally created by the parties?
Yeah, so. I believe in policy gives authority for the administration to enter into those stipulated expulsion agreements with a family. Um and generally speaking. Those are off the news in a situation where the parent is acknowledging that an expellable offense did in fact occur. So there's not necessarily a debate about that the student committed the offense. It's just a matter of. Trying to find a agreement around what the consequence, the full consequence should be. That's typically the role of the stipulated expulsion hearings. Not to relitigate what's already been agreed upon with regard to what the offense was. And avoid the time and energy that goes into the expulsion hearing on that and send using the agreement to kind of. Uh cut to the chase in terms of what's the next step for that kid's educational program.
So if there's a recommended outcome of stipulation, then the outcome is something that still could be reviewed and adjusted by the board. Is that true or not?
Yes, because ultimately, the agreement should come to the board for final ratification.
Now, Josh, my understanding is there's a change to the stipulated agreement, both family has a right to a hearing.
Uh if there's a change to the agreement, yes, yeah. Usually those agreements will include a waiver of right of contesting, but if that.
Right, yeah, yeah, multiple paragraphs of it.
Right, exactly.
Uh they've stated multiple different.
So that's right, and yet still some of them will challenge. Um but yeah, if they have disagreement of the terms, like I've mentioned before.
Okay, thanks. My second question is regarding the big five. Um are there uh guidance or definitions on some of those words like drugs? And firearms? I mean, some of them are clear, but I mean, I could see what's a knife, what's not a knife, is firearm, like is a paintball gun a firearm? Drugs, seems like it could be, is Tylenol a drug? Um I where where do we find that in the book?
Yeah, so it it should be a best of the book. And most of the time, to the extent that there is a specific definition that's not immediately included in Education Code forty eight eight hundred. That same section will refer you to the penal code, to the others.
Yeah.
Section where that definition is located.
The drugs scheme was the one that escaped the most open.
Yeah, so it's actually, yeah, controlled substances.
Okay.
Right, uh and then that has a longer list of different types of controlled substances.
Okay.
It'll be your responsibility of the administrator to specify, you know. It's this was a drug that was listed, you know, that this was.
So Chris will tell us.
Meant to stay everybody drug or not. Right, and and he may skip over that if the other side doesn't contest it, doesn't, is that an argument about the substance itself?
I'm seeing student production of evidence and I'm just wondering, do we do this yet? Uh the hearing body should ask the family prior to the start of the hearing. If they have any evidence they would like to introduce at the hearing and make sure that it is. I mean, copy prior to the start of the hearing, we distribute them. We do it.
I feel confident that you guys do that at the very beginning.
We're so scripted. I mean, I really, having a script that we read. Is really helpful. I mean, I think it's necessary to protect the student and the district, you know, to read. I mean, I know it's all, and and it. I think it adds an important, the the piece of formality to the event and it's important to the family and the student to be like, this is really serious.
Has the gravity.
Yeah, this is uh, this is what we're doing. There's, we are not, it is not an informal process in a way. I think we all take it seriously, we present it seriously. So I I feel like I need to go to the public real quickly. Um. I don't know, man, are you still? With us? Okay, anyone from the public wishing to anything? Yeah. Oh, okay. Anything else? I don't wanna, didn't wanna short circuit the board, I just.
I appreciate the the time, Josh, and.
Yes.
Chris. Geez. Swish, swish, cheese.
Yeah, I I really appreciate it. And I appreciate the guidance that you provide and answering questions and. Helping us get through this process is. It is the. The really, the gravity is.
It's tricky.
Yeah, I I would say Mister Dowler is is very knowledgeable or to the extent that we communicate and and discuss issues. He's he's already got like an idea of what to do and it's usually right on the money uh every time. So he's very uh experienced and knowledgeable on these things and and cares for kids and cares for. Um you know, understanding the severity of this and the need for it, but also considering what the alternatives are. Um so I I he's a pleasure to work with and I think he helps your board tremendously.
We we like.
Yes.
Josh.
I'll I'll second that emotion.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. So before we go in. What session is?
We have three actions.
We have actions, we said.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. Yeah. Okay, yeah. Chris, Mister Dowler, I think we can stick around for maybe a few minutes.
Taking a break.
Yeah.
If you want to.
Oh, no, not at all.
Are we taking a break?
I mean. Well, wait, let's go to the action set. So we got, yeah, uh let me know if you want to unfold. Five point oh one approval of a voting member representative and designated proxy for the Stanlows of this county adult education consortium. Five point oh two MOU between Templeton Unified School District and Stanlows Postal. Five point oh three agricultural career technical education incentive grants, oral ways. High schools, Stanlows of this whole high school.
We approve the consent.
Hey, we have a, I don't have time to write this down. Um we have a motion by uh Chris Lumber, a second by Mark. Uh Chris?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ee?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Ryan, yeah, okay. Uh thank you. Let's take a ten minute break. It's fourth, let's come back at four forty.
The meeting is now adjourned.
We're meeting is adjourned. We are taking a break and when we turn to closed second.